They've got a lot more this year, as you could hear as people stood up, right, guys? You guys did really, really well this year. So we're going to go through each of those presentations and awards in a few moments. Until then, we're just going to go through the confirmation of the minutes. It is the first item on the agenda, and we are looking at the minutes for the meetings held September 2017, sorry, 2025, and September 24, 2025. They've been circulated. Are there any corrections from members of council? I'm seeing none, so those are adopted as printed and circulated. Now, we're going to move into awards and recognition. As I said, there's two sets of awards and recognition this evening. We're going to begin with our 2012 Boys' I-Model Berry Soccer Club team on qualifying for the I-Model C1 division and their successful season. So it's my job on behalf of Berry City Council to welcome you back this evening and to congratulate you on the massive successes that you've had this season. The team was able to play in seven tournaments, bring home six championships, and one second-place result, which is incredible to have that type of consistency. So I'd now like to invite Fabio down to the microphone. It's a little bit different than last year. You're facing that way this year, if you can, and I'll come and join you after you've completed your comments about the season, and then we'll hand out the stuff together.
I would like to start, express my sincere gratitude to our mayor Alex for welcoming us once again, as he mentioned, to celebrate incredible achievement of our team. Thank you for ongoing support. I see you on Harvey Park coaching some boys over there, and for allowing us to this special occasion. A big thank you to the Berry Soccer Club for all support and dedication they provide to our team throughout the season. I especially want to acknowledge Will, Grant, Donil, and Jerry for their tireless efforts. I also want to recognize Coach Gary for their leadership and guidance, who's over here with me. They've been integral to our success. A special shout-out to my wife, Priscilla, who is the team manager. Your dedication and hard work behind the scenes made everything possible. I couldn't have done it without you. Thanks for the city of Berry for maintaining our fields. We practice all over the place pretty much every day. We really appreciate, and you guys are part of that. So every time that we see those folks maintaining, they are part of our team as well. And finally, thank you for all the parents for your support. Kids here, this amazing group of kids, has had the privilege of representing the colors of our city across North America, honoring our community and bonding values that make Berry special. Whether locally, nationally, or internationally, the 2012 Boys' Berry Soccer Club has proudly spread our city names far and wide, making many search for cities of Berry on the map. Many times we go to space, oh, where's Berry? Where's Berry? I'm pretty sure all the teams that we play, they know who Berry is now. So beyond the wins, what I hope these young athletes remember most are the life lessons we learned together along the way. The importance of resilience, teamwork, and perseverance, that together we are strong, together. No one gets anywhere alone. Remember every day that hard work pays off. It doesn't matter whether we win or lose. What truly matters are the lessons we take from each experience. It has been an honor, it has been an honor to serve you guys as a coach. Watching you grow and develop every day on a VIP seat has been a real privilege. I really appreciate you guys. And this is just one step in an exciting journey these young athletes have ahead of them. Thank you all very much. Thank you very much.
Amazing. And you went all over North America.
New York, Minnesota.
So the USA Cup in Minneapolis?
Yeah, we got second place. We won Revolution Cup. So you, and not only that, the way that these kids behave and like respect the game, and they actually represent our city the best way they could.
Amazing, amazing. I actually went to the USA Cup probably maybe a year or two older.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that we had the same standard you guys did. So keep that up. That's good. I'm actually going to hand this off. So when you're coming up, if you come down here, we're going to take a team photo right in this circle here. Okay? Isaac. Thank you very much. Well, again, congratulations. And before we move on to the second presentation, we know that any team that does well has great leadership. And with our young people, the volunteers, the coach, the trainers, the assistant coaches, the manager, invest a lot of time and effort in our young people. So if we could give an applaud of gratitude to those who've led the way of our young And the team I coached this summer finished 1-10, so it's probably the leadership there. Next, we're going to invite our friends from Zweibrocken. But I think one of the interesting things I just want to highlight for our friends that are visiting us here this evening is that football, soccer, football, is actually a major growing sport in Canada. It's actually the number-one sport in the country for the number of people that play it, which is not what you would think of Canada, right? You think of hockey, maybe lacrosse, and some other things. But it's becoming a major staple, and that's thanks to, obviously, all of the professional, semi-professional, the coaches, and the volunteers that are bringing it forward so much. Now, I'd like to call upon Jeff Tool from the Simcoe County District School Board Global Perspectives Program to approach the podium, and you'd like to come and say a few words about the international delegation visiting us here from Helmut's Gymnasium in the city's twin-city of Zweibrocken, Germany.
You can come up with me, babe. My name's Jeff Tool. I am the Global Perspectives Coordinator at Innisdale Secondary School. This, I've been here many times, and I always say the same thing. This night is not really for me to be speaking. It's for somebody much more articulate to come up. And I'm going to introduce that person in a moment, but I would like to say quickly a huge thank you to our mayor Alex Nuttall, Mark Satchuk at the IRC International Relations Committee. Without your support, this program is not as vibrant as it is. I'd also like to thank the Simcoe County District School Board, who supports us tirelessly, vigorously, and the teachers who help me run this program, Karen Parnell, Matt Torle, and Jamie Babcock. They need to be recognized as well. In addition to that, we have three teachers from Helmholtz Gymnasium, okay? That's in a place called Zweibrocken, Germany, and that's Berry's sister city. And they are here with us tonight, and I'd like to address them. Mareka Schuler, thank you for joining us. Vice Principal Alex Mueller, thank you, and Director/Principal Kirsten Keen, thank you for coming and joining us tonight. Like I said, I could talk about global forever. I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish over the last, while I've been in charge, over a decade. But when the godfather of global, David Morrison, was in charge, I mean, this has been going on for a quarter of a century. I can't believe that I'm saying that. I used to have hair when I started this program. So that said, I would like to call someone up from Zweibrocken who will be speaking on behalf of the school, the Helmholtz Gymnasium. I'd like to call up Alex Mueller, please, and thank you.
Dear Mayor Nuttall, city councillors, members of the International Relations Committee, citizens of Berry, fellow teachers, students, and friends, dear ladies and gentlemen, it's a great honor for me to speak before you today as a representative of the exchange group from Zweibrocken. Year after year, we are invited to participate as guests in the city council meeting, and we are invited to address you during the session. This is a sign of your appreciation for the partnership between our two cities, Berry and Zweibrocken, as well as between Innisdale Secondary High School and the Helmholtz Gymnasium in Zweibrocken. In the fall of 2024, we had the pleasure of welcoming a delegation from Berry at Helmholtz Gymnasium in Zweibrocken. It was a particular special that we, Principal Miss Keem, and I had the opportunity to personally meet the founder of the partnership between Berry and Zweibrocken, Mr. Sean Maurice Pichon. Accompanied by Mr. Thompson, Mr. Harris, Ms. Gewer, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Hay, we discussed with students involved in the exchange program the significance and value of the academic program Global Perspectives at Innisdale High School for the students of both our schools. Over the past more than 25 years, approximately 1,400 Canadian and German students have participated in this unique program, gaining experiences that have profoundly and sustainably shaped their lives. Each year, our students' return from Canada changed, not just because of their experiences with Tim Hortons bagels, Beaver Tail's pastry, or poutine. Year after year, it becomes evident that the exchange offers invaluable benefits. The students' return a bit more mature and independent. It is remarkable what these eight weeks of intensive experiences shared by the youth from both cities bring in terms of positive developments for their individual growth and the cultivation of social skills. And many more people are involved on both sides, parents, siblings, grandparents, as well as teachers of the students, so that in varying degrees, about 10,000 individuals have had contact with the program and contributed to its success. Temporary, but also many lifelong friendships have formed and hopefully will continue to be rekindled for a long time. Why these numbers? Certainly not because I'm a math teacher, but because I care about the large number of people who have lived important values without which the success of this exchange program over such a long time would not have been possible and without which the young people would not have felt at home in foreign environments. These are values that are more important today than ever. Community spirit instead of selfishness, tolerance instead of rejection, engagement instead of indifference, respect instead of disrespect, to name just a few. These are fundamental elements of functioning democracies, and these functioning democracies are more endangered than ever. Worldwide, we see and feel the decline. Our principal, Miss Keem, who has accompanied us this year in the first week to Berry, as well as the teaching teams from both schools, who have actively shaped and supported this exchange over the years, are very grateful that the students have the opportunity to have these wonderful experiences. With our guest gift this year, we would like to express our gratitude and connection to Berry and the significance of this partnership as well as the values we uphold. Years ago, we as a school community fought for the establishment of an auditorium at Helmholtz Gymnasium in a democratic process, and ultimately, we achieved our goal. In 2023, the then 11th grade of our school created a mural in the hall as part of an art project. There, two hands are depicted intertwining. Around these hands, the terms I mentioned earlier can be read: community, engagement, respect, tolerance, and in addition, acceptance, equality, freedom, rights, and democracy. We would like to present you with a copy of this mural today as we believe that the message of this project by the students of 2023 expresses what Global Perspectives and the partnership between Berry and Zweibrocken are all about. May we continue to uphold and live these values together. Thank you very much.
Before we go back to the rest of the evening, I did want to say, first of all, thank you so much for the very kind and thoughtful gift. Certainly, we will find somewhere to display it, and perhaps we should be working with the school board as well to maybe even display it in one of the schools where we're having the programs intersect. Would be a great thing to have. And finally, I just want to say thank you to a couple of groups of people. First of all, to the IRC, I see Mark, Jim, Rob, and there's many families, individuals who make that up. I don't know if William Bill's here tonight, or is he? Jamie as well, yeah. And there's tons that help out to make that all work. The other piece is that when students come here, they stay with families, and when our students go there, they stay with families. And it is a full family commitment, and it's awesome. So to all of the host families, I just want to say thank you so much for doing that. I know that you're providing an incredible experience for these young people when they're not in school or in programming. And, you know, as a kid, we actually, I guess maybe at a 15-year-old, we actually had a Japanese student come as part of our program there as well. And so thank you for doing that. It's a pretty incredible thing to do, to invest in young people's lives who are from across the world. So appreciate that, and you make this program work, so thank you. Now, we're going to talk about something called development charges for the next hour, which I'm sure is not something you want to talk about. So if you'd like to go, you can certainly, we will take a break for you to be able to leave. And if you'd like to stay, it's the most interesting show on television, so you can stay as well. But we'll take just a two-minute break here. Okay, we're going to keep going. It's 7:32 PM, and we have some business to get into. And so I'm going to ask if there's any deputations regarding municipal restructuring proposals, CAO 001-25, DV 039-25, update in the development charge waiver, ECD 007-25, the confidential acquisition of land matter post-secondary institution, ECD 009-25, pilot winter downtown patio program update recommendations. I'm seeing none. Then we'll move through that. Past tax applications and communications into committee reports, which, Deputy Mayor, I believe you have the committee reports.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Moved by myself, second by Councilor Nagusi, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated September 24, 2025, now circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Nagusi, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated September 24, 2025, now circulated, be received. This is 25G209, reported to the Affordability Committee dated September 10, 2025, and 25G210, reported to the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee dated September 17, 2025. Any questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. It carries, Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Nagusi, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated September 24, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Nagusi, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated September 24, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G211, Berry Community Foundation International Relations Committee Youth Ambassador's Program, donor-directed investment flow-through fund. 25G212, library budget requirements policies. 25G213, Duckworth Street parking restrictions, wards 1 and 2. 25G214, intellectual property rights, Kemperfall Kelly trademark. 25G215, 2025 business plan status for June 30. Any questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor. It carries, Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Nagusi, that General Committee Report dated September 29, 2025, now circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Nagusi, that the General Committee Report dated September 29, 2025, now circulated, be received. This is 25G216, proposed municipal restructuring. Any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor. It carries unanimously, Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Nagusi, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated October 1, 2025, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Nagusi, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated October 1, 2025, be adopted. This is CAO 001-25, municipal restructuring proposal. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? I'm seeing none, all those in favor. It carries unanimously, Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Nagusi, that Section B of the General Committee Report...
So that's hundreds and hundreds of units for Berry residents, which is awesome, awesome, awesome to see. So we'll call the vote, and I'll ask for a recorded vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'm going to start with Counselor Reema.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Counselor Nagusi.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Morales.
Yes.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yes.
And Mayor Nettle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now going to move on to the direct motions. Perfect. Before we get to direct motions, let me make sure they've got nothing else here. No, there's no deferred business. So Deputy Mayor, it's over to you.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, update to the use of city property bylaw.
Okay, we'll go from the shaker to the mover.
Okay, I just put the motion on the floor as written, correct? Okay, moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson regarding operating and capital costs for the 2025 ice storm. Whereas municipality of the city of Berry has eligible costs directly linked to the March 2025 ice storm, the council of the corporation of the city of Berry hereby requests assistance under the municipal ice storm assistance program with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to allow for the city of Berry to submit a claim for costs associated with the ice storm. And further, that Colleen Smith, in term Director of Finance, be given delegated authority to verify and attest to the accuracy of the claim.
Thank you, Counselor Nixon, Madam Clerk. It's moved by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson, the operating capital costs for the 2025 ice storm. Whereas the municipality of the city of Berry has eligible costs directly linked to the March 2025 ice storm, the council of the corporation of the city of Berry hereby requests assistance under the municipal ice storm assistance program with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to allow the city of Berry to submit a claim for costs associated with the ice storm, and further, that Colleen Smith, in term Director of Finance, be given delegated authority to verify and attest to the accuracy of the claim. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the ice storm motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. It carries unanimously. I think it's your turn.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, update to the use of city property bylaw.
Seeing none, all those in favor. It carries unanimously. I think it's your turn.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, update to the use of city property bylaw. Under the current state of emergency, staff have the authority to bring forward updates to existing bylaws to ensure they reflect the current process and practices related to encampment response and are presenting by Bill 110 and updated to the use of city property bylaw for consideration by council. Two, that staff and legislative and court service department enforcement services be authorized to make application to the Ministry Attorney General to set fines related to the use of city property bylaw with fine amounts ranging from 100 to 1,000 based on the nature of the offense.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Nixon, an update to the use of city property bylaw. One, that under the current state of emergency, staff have the authority to bring forward updates to existing bylaws to ensure that they reflect current processes and practices related to encampment response and are presenting Bill 110, an update to the use of city property bylaw for consideration by council. Two, the staff and legislative and court services department enforcement services be authorized to make application to the Ministry of the Attorney General for set fines related to the use of city property bylaw with fine amounts ranging from 100 to $1,000 based on the nature of the offense. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. So this, just a little bit of background and stuff, it's just, it's the definition related to tents and structures and considering, like, it's just bringing it in line with the current parks bylaw and adding the reference to a boulevard. And it actually, sorry, and the amendments to the legislation were to ensure align with the current section of the municipal act. And I can get into it, but, you know, I understand this is a touchy subject, but I think for a lot of different reasons. The weather's changing. I don't think anybody in this room would consider a tent on a boulevard a safe or humane place. And I think some of the comments you made about the DC bylaw, that, you know, this council is doing lots to try to, you know, create with the affordable housing crisis and stuff like that. So I believe that this isn't about, you know, an overreach under the Emergency Act and stuff. It's bringing things in line, and actually, it's a safety concern. You know, as the weather changes, you know, people on boulevards, for any reason, is unsafe. That's where the snow windrows, you know, the windrow from the snowplows go, cars lose control, cars end up on boulevards, and it's a safety concern, to be frank. But I just, this is just to bring things so they're all aligned, and, you know, we're looking at helping people. And I don't believe that having a tent or a structure on a boulevard is good for anybody.
Any other comments or questions, Counselor Hamilton?
I just have a question in regards to the reapplying for set fines, and perhaps this is directed to Madam Clerk. So this is just part of the process, that when you open up a bylaw, you have to then resubmit it, you have to reapply for the fines again. Can you just provide some clarity in terms of how the fines are given out, so to speak? Like, when I read this full motion in its entirety, I guess what I'm getting at, I want to make sure that we're not handing out fines to people in encampments, right? Like, we're not looking at implementing new fines to people that are otherwise out and housed. This is not the intent, correct?
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton. Yes, that is correct. We do not issue fines to those living in encampments. They are issued notices once all services and accommodations are put in place. That's when they would be issued a notice, but no fines are issued. This bylaw applies to a number of different things throughout the city, and the fines that are in the bylaw are issued for a number of different matters, not just this bylaw is a citywide bylaw, it's not just directed at one thing.
Thank you, appreciate that clarity.
Yep, Counselor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle, and thank you, Counselor Hamilton. I had the same kind of interesting clarification of what this was and what it wasn't. So we know it's adding the boulevard, we know it's not adding additional fines, it's just that has to be added in line with the additional area, what we're talking about boulevards. I guess my other just question for clarity, and people are here, obviously, for a certain concern with regard to public spaces, and just want to clarify, and maybe, I'm not sure it's through you, Mayor Nettle, to, who, by me, maybe it's CEO Proust, but we are still bound by the approach that we are required, if we move somebody from a public space, to offer a different level of accommodation. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Harris, that is correct. The city continues to abide by and follow religiously the decisions of the courts, which have shaped the way we deal and other municipalities deal with encampments.
Great, thank you. And I think, Deputy Mayor Thompson, you said it well. I mean, living on a boulevard very shortly will be a very dangerous proposition, so I think it's a safe place to start with, that we don't want people on boulevards and being at risk, so whether it be cars or snow removal or whatever, it seems very dangerous. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the bylaws? So I just want to be really clear, this isn't a wintertime move, okay? This is a permanent move. The encampments are no longer welcome, they were never safe, and to accept otherwise would be not taking the facts into consideration. And it doesn't matter if they're on the side of a road, or they're in a forest, or they're in a park. There are massive amounts of drugs, weapons, and individuals, both those who are taking advantage of victims and victims inside of the encampments, and victims around them. And I think we need to be very, very, very clear, which is why I declared the state of emergency, on what the expectation is in the city of Berry. The expectation in the city of Berry is that if you want help, and you want housing, and you want support, then we are here to help. We'll bring in the county, they will bring in the agencies, and provide the support necessary. If you want to live in addiction on the side of a road, in the forest, or in a park that's supposed to be meant for kids to be playing in, please find somewhere else that has those sanctioned areas, because Berry no longer has these encampments sanctioned. And it will take months, and millions and millions and millions of dollars to the cleanup, and we will invest tens of millions of dollars, already tonight, $80 million, in the answers. But that is always going to be the better road than an encampment on the side of the road with a tent with drugs and 10,000 cash, and crossbows, and starter pistols, and knives, and kids walking by. It's just not allowed in this city anymore. And our bylaws need to be brought up to date to reflect what the expectation, the rules of this community are. And it's unfortunate that it's gotten to this point, but this is what's necessary, because until, right now, with the emergency in place, we have the emergency which is determining the rules, that that's going to dissipate as soon as the encampments are gone. And we need to make sure that all of the bylaws are properly structured, properly communicated with the province, the Attorney General's office, and properly communicated to the public to ensure that we can actually make these bylaws work and enforce them. So I really do appreciate council taking this on this evening. This work is going to take years, it's not going to take nights, right? And there's a lot of folks, a lot of individuals that need help. And the only way we improve our community is person after person, individual after individual, getting that help and support. It's the only way. So I'll call the vote on the item at this point, and I'll ask again for a recorded vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Counselor Reema.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counsel, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Counselor Nagusi.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Morales.
Yes.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yes.
Mayor Nettle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now going to go to inquiries, as there's no presentations this evening. Are there any inquiry, sorry, there's another, you know what?
I have a direct motion.
There's two more.
Yes.
I'm just, like, one more. I'm sorry for cutting you off there.
No problem.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, to do with a notice without motion, letter of support for Matchpoint Tennis Club for concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry.
It's moved by Counselor Reema, and seconded by, all right, who's the culprit? Counselor Nixon. That is the signature, sir. There's a motion without notice, letter of support for Matchpoint Tennis Club for a concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry. That pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, as amended permission, we granted introduce a motion without notice concerning a letter of support for Matchpoint Tennis Club for their concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry. As it is the motion without notice, there's no debate on it, so all those in favor of the motion without notice. And it carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that a letter of support be provided to Matchpoint Tennis Club for their concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry, and that staff work with representatives of Matchpoint Tennis Club on potential locations and report back to the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee, and I can speak to it.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's moved by Counselor Reema, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that the letter of support for Matchpoint Tennis Club for concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry, and that staff work with representatives of Matchpoint Tennis Club on potential locations report back to the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee. It's over to you there, Counselor Reema.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm normally not very supportive of last-minute motions coming before this table, but in this case, we've just been requested to support a application for a grant. The grant has to be in in the next couple of days, so we won't be meeting between now and when the grant is due. So what they're asking for is support for the grant, and that they'll work with our staff to find a suitable home for a potential dome. So that's the reason for the motion tonight.
Thank you, Counselor, and I need to apologize on this one, because it was
Yes.
Counsel, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Noguchi?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Nuttall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now going to go to inquiries, as there's no presentations this evening. Are there any inquiry, sorry, there's another, you know what?
I have a direct motion.
There's two more.
Yes.
I'm just, like, one more. I'm sorry for cutting you off there.
No problem.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, to do with a notice without motion, letter of support for Matchpoint Tennis Club for concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry.
It's moved by Counselor Rima and seconded by, all right, who's the culprit? Counselor Nixon. That is the signature, sir. There's a motion without notice, letter of support for Matchpoint Tennis Club for a concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry. That pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, as amended, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning a letter of support for Matchpoint Tennis Club for their concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry. As it is the motion without notice, there's no debate on it, so all those in favor of the motion without notice. And it carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that a letter of support be provided to Matchpoint Tennis Club for their concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry, and that staff work with representatives of Matchpoint Tennis Club on potential locations and report back to the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee, and I can speak to it.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's moved by Counselor Rima, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that the letter of support for Matchpoint Tennis Club for concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry, that a letter of support be provided to Matchpoint Tennis Club for the concept of a tennis dome to be located in the city of Berry, and that staff work with representatives of Matchpoint Tennis Club on potential locations, report back to the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee. It's over to you there, Counselor Rima.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm normally not very supportive of last-minute motions coming before this table, but in this case, we've just been requested to support a application for grant. The grant has to be in in the next couple of days, so we won't be meeting between now and when the grant is due. So what they're asking for is support for the grant, and that they'll work with our staff to find a suitable home for a potential dome. So that's the reason for the motion tonight.
Thank you, Counselor, and I need to apologize on this one, because it was stuck in my technology, as I didn't answer it quickly enough a week and a half ago. So it's my fault that it's so late, and appreciate everyone giving it the time. Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Thank you, Counselor Rima, for the explanation as to why the timing. It's never good to miss money, it's even worse to have to give it back. Do you get the reference, Mayor Nuttall? Tennis club over.
Yeah, you might as well say what the reference is.
Yeah, so I'll be hesitantly supportive. The only reason I'm hesitantly supportive of this is the, like, that we support it, the plan, right? We haven't seen the plan. I trust that the work has been done and the right people have seen it. So I trust that. The other thing is, we're supporting the letter and we're supporting the application. If we bring money back to Berry, that's great. If it's not successful, the wording of this doesn't tie us to Matchpoint. And the reason I bring that up is, you and I have been, have had conversations with people who want to provide the service, with people who have been in the Berry and area community for decades. So I don't want this to send the message that, like, thank you for all that work and actual work that they did over a year ago, we're now forming an exclusive partnership. So because I didn't see anything about a partnership, or a, we're moving forward no matter what, just like, we're essentially stamping their letter and wishing them good luck, as a result, I'll be, I'll be quietly supportive of this. But Mayor Nuttall, I definitely wanted to make that clear distinction between endorsing their application and moving forward on an exclusivity basis, because I think that distinction needs to be made.
Yeah, I think, so Counselor, thank you for raising that. And back in 2010, I think, we applied, we're essentially being guaranteed the money, but decided not to, because there was a plea from the Spring Water Bubble not to create any competition inside the city of Berry to them. They're now communicating to us that they're, I'm being told by Spring Water, that they can't have Berry individuals in there, that it's a Spring Water Dome, that first come, first served for Spring Water, and if there's anything left over, then they'll work through that with Berry folks. So I think that kind of burned us, quite frankly, 15 years later, because it was paid for, ready to go. Ray something?
Ray Demaree.
Demaree, thank you, was the person who brought that forward. But I think it's also important, when we're talking about this, Counselor Morales, is this is a group that's forming in Berry, from Berry, to do this through Tennis Canada. So what they're doing is taking the grants that have been given to Tennis Canada and saying, put, use some of the money here. And we haven't, there is no location set, there's no, anything really said at this point, we're supporting the actual grant application. I will say, I'd be hard pressed to go through and support their application to Tennis Canada, and then come up with a different operating partner than the one who's gone, done the work, to go get the application done and then get the approval. So I agree with you, all things being equal on the back end of this, I think we should be rewarding the ones who did the work. And that's just, you know, to me, it just makes sense and is fair, so.
It's very quickly, I also didn't even have the background knowledge of the recent development from the township of Spring Water. That's, that changes dynamics a lot.
100%, 100%. And they, and they were one of the groups that are looking at Berry as well, to be totally frank, like, they realize how much of an issue it is for them. Any other questions or comments on this motion? I'm seeing none, so I'm going to call a vote, all those in favor. Carries? You might see Sergio and me playing tennis in his bubble one day. He'll pass. I'm going to hold back on pickleball, because it'll lose me votes. We're going to move past, then, I don't think there's any more direct motions? And we're going to go to inquiries, are there inquiries around the table? I'm seeing none, are there any announcements around the table? That's when Counselor Congal logs in. Counselor Harris?
For Counselor Congal.
Oh, here we go.
In recognition of our Bird Friendly Cities and Communities Initiative, tonight we recognize October Big Day Fall Migration taking place on October 11th, 2025, in celebration of Fall World Migratory Bird Day. This global event highlights the incredible journeys of migratory birds and the vital role they play in connecting ecosystems and communities across nations. Berry, situated on the Atlantic Flyway, is a key stopover for many bird species during migration. This year's theme, Shared Spaces, creating bird-friendly cities and communities, encourages us to protect birds through education, sustainable practices, and community engagement. On behalf of Mayor Alex Nuttall and the city of Berry, we officially proclaim that October 11th, 2025 is October Big Day, and invite all citizens to celebrate the beauty and importance of migratory birds in our community. So thank you.
Perfect. Can't wait for it. And are there any other announcements? Okay, so we're going to move past Migratory Bird Day and into a notice on Canada Post Strike. Just want to remind our residents that Service Berry at berry.ca, or you can contact us, obviously, through Service Berry on the phone, or just visiting berry.ca for any of, you know, water, wastewater bills, tax bill questions, fines, or infractions. So please, understand that you're still obligated to pay all of these items despite Canada Post being on strike. And also want to remind folks, the Textile Collection Week occurs the 6th to the 10th of October. 2025 residents are encouraged to help keep reusable items out of the landfill by participating in the curbside collection of textiles. So for more information, you can visit berry.ca. Residents are invited to complete a survey and provide feedback about the city's drinking water. The deadline to complete surveys is the October 24th, 2025. For more information, please visit berry.ca. And as a friendly reminder, this is the last council committee meeting until October 29th, which is obviously just over three weeks, four weeks away. Finally, I just want to, because there's a lot of different pages, Rebecca, to your team, can you say thank you? Because there's a lot of announcements on a weekly basis, and they all have pages to back them up and get the information out, and I'm just realizing that, how much there is as we go through it. So please pass on the thank you for that. We're going to move into the bylaws. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Noguchi. Leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 109, 110, 111.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Noguchi, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed. Bills 109, 110, and 111. Any questions or comments on the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor. It carries, Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Noguchi. Leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time on this day and finally passed. Bill 112, confirmation.
So confirmation bylaws, moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Noguchi, that leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 112. Any questions or comments from members of council? I'm seeing none, all those in favor. It carries. I have a motion to adjourn, please. It's moved by Counselor Harvey and seconded by Counselor Noguchi. All those in favor. It carries unanimously. Thanks, everyone. We're adjourning at 8:04 PM.